Okay, first up, Fire Department. Mr. Sagrino, Chief?
Good evening. Tonight I have two appointments to recommend. First, I'd like to recommend Mr. Connor Egbert for appointment to the position of firefighter, paramedic. We've done all the background checks, the interviews. He passed all the medical and physical ability testing. Currently works as a, in a private ambulance company as a paramedic. He's been an EMT prior to that. During his paramedic training program, he was awarded the Program Director Award. He holds the Mass National, Massachusetts National Paramedic Certification, Advanced Cardiac Life Support, Pre-Hospital Trauma Life Support, Pediatric Advanced Life Support, Advanced Medical Life Support, and Emergency Pediatric Care. Pleased to recommend Mr. Connor Egbert for appointment to the position of firefighter, paramedic at the Burlington Fire Department effective July 22nd, 2024.
Thank you, Chief. With the Chief's recommendation, I wish to appoint Connor Egbert to the position of firefighter, paramedic in the Burlington Fire Department and ask that the Board waive its 15-day waiting period.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
So moved to second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, against, 5-0-0, in favor. Congratulations.
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 Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Chief, want to take some pitches after?
We'll do both. We'll do both right afterwards?
Yeah, why don't we do both right afterwards? All right.
Okay, go sit back down.
Thanks. All right, so our second appointment would be Ms. Rebecca Donahue, again, for firefighter, paramedic. She's employed as a, at a private ambulance company as a paramedic. She previously worked at a different ambulance company as a EMT, basic, a dispatcher and communications supervisor. She has a bachelor's degree in health science and a master's degree in health and wellness management. Her certifications are similar, Massachusetts National Paramedic, Advanced Cardiac Life Support, cardiac, cardiopulmonary resuscitation, pediatric advanced life support, and emergency medical dispatch. I'm pleased to recommend Ms. Donahue for appointment in the position of firefighter, paramedic at the Burlington Fire Department, effective upon her orientation week. We haven't got that date quite set yet, and we'll update you.
Thank you, Chief. With the Chief's recommendation, I wish to appoint Rebecca Donahue to the position of firefighter, paramedic in the Burlington Fire Department, and ask that the Board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
I'd probably move that for Burlington's first female firefighter.
Second.
Moved to the second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Against? 5-0-0, in favor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard, congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Now we'll do pitches. I'll take one, but does it sit here for another?
Yeah, family pitches.
Chief, why don't you stay up there?
Oh, that's okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, 128, DPW Business Manager. I want to give them a second, they'll clear that room, and we'll shut the doors. Sometimes it gets a little bit loud and happiness out there. Okay, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Forjman. Good evening, Board. I'm here to provide a recommendation for the hiring of the business manager. After conducting interviews, recommending Ms. Ying Yi Wong for this position. Ying Yi comes to us from the town of Arlington, where she has spent the last two-plus years, first as Assistant Collector, followed by her most recent role as Deputy Treasure, Treasurer Collector. Prior to her time with Arlington, she obtained five years of experience in the private sector as a data analyst. Ying Yi has obtained an associate degree in business administration from UMass Lowell and is expected to obtain a bachelor's degree with a finance concentration by the end of this year. She intends to continue attending night classes to obtain her MBA as well. Given her qualifications and her in-depth experience with the financial software we use, I believe she'll make a great addition, and would like to recommend Ms. Ying Yi Wong for Business Manager.
Thank you, Brian. I've already got a couple of calls from Arlington complaining that we were stealing her, so with Brian's recommendation, I wish to recommend Ying Yi Wong to the position of DPW Business Manager, and ask that the Board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
So moved to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0-0, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Welcome. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Time for another appointment. TA SP Administrative Assistant. Lynn?
After conducting interviews for the position of Administrative Assistant in the Select Board Office, I am recommending Matthew Winslow for the position. Matthew graduated from Roanoke College in Virginia with a degree in business administration. He brings strong administrative skills and eagerness to learn the process and responsibilities. I believe Matthew will be a great addition to our office.
Thank you, Lynn. With Lynn's recommendation, I wish to appoint Matthew Winslow as Administrative Assistant in the Select Board TA Office, and ask that the Board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
So moved to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0-0, congratulations, Matthew. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, an update, Scholarship Committee. Is somebody here for that?
I don't see her, so...
I don't see Christine yet, Chairman.
Want to skip over that? We'll go to the Landlocked Forest.
I don't see her either.
You got a, would you like, do you have anything to do with Martha's request?
I'm just, I'm just Martha's wake-up.
Okay, all right.
We're just moving too fast, Mr. Chairman, so... AMC's here, if that helps, number 133.
What's that? We can do the temple, the temple's not here either, so...
No, but the temple, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the temple we do every year.
We do every year for the temple, so if you get...
There's Martha.
Oh, there's Martha. Let's go backwards a little bit. She's not coming in, but she's here. Hi, Martha.
Hello.
I'm not going to put you on the spot, but you're up.
I saw people celebrating outside, and I thought, whoa, in a hurry.
You thought you missed the party, didn't you?
I told him I was working, man.
So if you could, when you sit down, just introduce yourself. We know who you are, but some of the TV residents may not, so, and then we'll go from there.
All right. Good evening, and thank you for having me. I'm here, my name is Martha Simon, I live on Willow Way, and I've been a member of the Friends of the Landlocked Forest since its inception, and I'm representing them as the president. I'm here tonight to ask the Select Board for ongoing permission to maintain the meadow by mowing it once or twice. Just a reminder, I know you had information in your packet, but in, well, for background for people who are listening, the town of Burlington owns the Landlocked Forest. It's a piece of 200, it's 250 acres between Route 3 and Route 128 on the west side, and it's also bordered by Bedford and Lexington. It's a beautiful forest, and I hope anyone who hasn't yet been there will have a chance. I've gone on walks with some of you, and I want to personally invite you for a guided tour of the Landlocked Forest, if you would like one. I know, Joe, that you know the forest better than I do, so, so anyway, so after, the town of Burlington owns the property, and it is under the purview of the Select Board, so over the years, after it was, over the years, there's one habitat that's been, that's different. It's mostly forest, but there is one small meadow, and for people who know the outdoors, if you don't do anything to a meadow, it turns back into forest. And so the Friends of the Landlocked Forest, along with a lot of volunteer help from the New England Mountain Banking Association, their greater Boston area, they've been fabulous in helping us, have come to the Select Board to ask permission to mow the meadow, to maintain it, to be able to keep it there. At the beginning, everything was done by hand because we had consulted with John Keely, our previous conservation director, and we wanted to, we were concerned about, were there rocks under all this mess, were there beehives, we just didn't know. And now that it's been mowed for several years, we now have been able to rent a brush mower and been able to do some of the mowing that way and get into cutting down vines also and that kind of thing. So we did start in 2016, and we've come for permission. As I said, it's all volunteers who do this work, and we would like to ask permission from the Select Board to have ongoing permission to mow the Landlocked Forest meadow once or twice a year, which is the recommended amount, if we can get the volunteers. And that way, we wouldn't have this additional, we have to organize it, we have to get the volunteers, we have to, you know, arrange for the tools, and, and we have to come and ask permission. So we would like to get that permission so that we would, of course, and our request would be to do it in conjunction with the Director of Conservation. And I have talked with John Keely over the years, and I've talked with Eileen Coleman, our new conservation director, and adjusted plans based on their understanding of the needs of the meadow and the forest. And so we wouldn't just pick a random date, we would do it in coordination to make sure it's seasonally appropriate and helpful to the habitats. And I don't know, Eileen, if there's anything else that I missed that you would want to add about mowing the meadow?
Eileen Coleman, Conservation Administrator. I was just going to say that it's a, it's a pretty small area, but it's nice to have a diversity of habitat. It's just, it's just helpful. As Martha was saying, it's mostly forest. It's, it's just healthy and good to have maybe an open meadow spot for other types of pollinators. You've got, what did the monarchs love? I've just forgotten.
The milkweed.
Milkweed, they've got milkweed in there, so, I mean, a lot of what they're dealing with is bittersweet and some other invasive, so that's, the, the mowing, which we're fully in support of, just allows them to be able to, to control that a bit better and to, and to allow the growth of the other, the other species.
And actually, the other thing I would add is, in the years we've been doing this, the meadow now has more milkweed. It has more plants that are helpful to the pollinators, to the butterflies and the birds and those kinds of animals, so it's, it's been pretty successful, but bittersweet is pretty ruthless, so it's not, you know, you can't stop. So, you know, and even last time we did it, somebody actually started trying to, started digging up roots, which is the, I think, from talking to Eileen last week or a couple weeks ago, the most effective way to get the bittersweet out. And so maybe over time, as it's, the mowing gets less and less difficult, that we can do more of digging up roots as well, so. So I'd like to know if anyone has questions or however you...
Usually let the Board start. I'm going to start first on this one here. I have no problem with you cutting the grass, mowing the meadow, whatever you want to call it, a couple times a year. I think that it's a good thing, I've always enjoyed it. The biggest thing is that you want to come, you don't want to come in front of us anymore to just do this every single time you want to cut the grass. That's the big thing, right? So the thing I would ask is that, when you are going to cut the grass, please let us know, so that we can put it out there that on this particular weekend, if you need help and someone's around, we can, we can advertise it through our meetings, or we can, we can find someone to go up there and help you with. The other part of it is, if it's going to be early September, when the hunting season kicks in, I'd like to know, just so I can let the hunters that do hunt up there with strickele archery, know that they're going to be in there on a Saturday. There is no hunting on Sunday, so, so they can know, like, all right, they're going to be cutting the meadow down on this particular Saturday, guys, stay out of there. Just stay out for the day, don't go in there. I actually think it's a really good thing that you're doing this, and I am not opposed to this whatsoever. Like I always said, Martha, you know the trail system very, very well. I know the inside better. As far as the trails go, I have no idea where the trails are. I just walk through the woods, it's easy for me. So, but there's something that I think myself and this Board can help out with, to keep that forest going the way it is, total agreement with it, so.
Through the Chair, if I may, comment about the trails. I believe the last time we came, we actually got permission for a new trail marking system and a new trail map, and again, the New England, the Greater Boston New England Mountain Banking Association's been helping us, they have the GPS equipment, and they had some trouble, I, I wanted to comment that we haven't got it yet. They had trouble getting the material that they had planned to get for the signs that was going to be real sturdy and, you know, that kind of thing. So we can also let you know when the trail, the new trail map is up as well, so, sorry to interrupt, but I'd wanted to film it.
No, I think it's a good thing, you get the mountain bikers in there, you get trail walkers in there, you got boy scouts in there, you've got, you get the meadow in there, you've got hunters in there, you've got, that's what it's there for, it's there for everybody to use. And if we all just combine it together, it works out fine, you know, it's been, it's been, it's been great up there. So on that note, I will, Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope I'm not too out there on this thought. I know that cutting grass or mowing the meadow and getting volunteers to do that's probably not the easiest task. So when I go out to boil things each, there's a big field, and I've seen a shepherd, a guy that I believe is a shepherd, brings down his goats and his sheep to clear the meadow around the city, Town Hall. I know they have goats that clear out poison ivy that people don't, obviously don't want to touch. And I recently heard that they have goats clearing areas to prevent brush fires. Is it an option to bring in goats to do this work?
Through the Chair, it's a wonderful idea, and we did look into it. It's really expensive for the Friends of the Landlocked Forest. However, the property is owned by the town of Burlington. If the Select Board decided it was the right way to go, we certainly could coordinate with that. The other issue, though, is they usually need to be penned in overnight, and they're wild animals, and it would be, I don't even know what it would cost to, not just to rent them, but then to secure them and guard them overnight. So it's, it is, it's, we, we did look into it. They love, there's certain goats, I don't know which ones, but that love bittersweet, and it's like, God, I'd love to do that, and we did go through that, so it is a good idea. And if the town felt they wanted to put some other resources into it, that's something we could look into as well, so.
You mean, at minimum, could you at least find out how much it is? I mean, may not go anywhere? Don't want to say yes or no without know, we're saying yes and no to.
Off the top of my head, my memory from a few years ago is that it was maybe going to be about $700 a day, but that didn't, I don't know if that included transporting them, and again, because we know there are no roads that go in, they would have to be walked in from, you know, we have neighbors and abutters who will give us permission to bring in the equipment for the meadow mowing, and then there'd have to be fencing put up to protect them, and so that's just a very low-ball number.
All right. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The goats, it sounds like fun, not going to lie. It sounds like a, like a logistical nightmare, you know, so I think for now, we can, we can stick with the, the brush mower, but, you know, who knows? I want to thank both of you. I think that, you know, all the work that the Friends of the Landlocked Forest and Conservation has done over the years is tremendous. You know, I think preserving this land is, it's not just about preserving the land, but like, about finding unique ways to use it, and I think that through using it, we've found that we're also finding unique ways to take care of it and create a little more biodiversity, which I think is fantastic. It's a, it's a yes vote for me. You know, I, I think along with, with Joe's kind of thinking, I think Martha, what you had said in the request is obviously it's, you know, in conjunction with conservation, I think it's, you know, one or two years, again, depending on what Eileen and the team think is the right approach and the best, you know, kind of tact, and, you know, I think for me, it's about making sure that we're mowing it in, in a smart way, and not just, you know, mowing it to mow it, you know, but, but obviously, you know, I think with the right people thinking about that, so, you know, I have no issue with it. And who knows, maybe every couple of years, Matt will just know how it's going, but I agree with Joe, I think, you know, let us know when it's going to happen and how we, how we can help get volunteers, whatever that looks like. I still think it's a, it's a strong partnership, this Board wants to participate in it. But that's all for me, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing really to add, I just want to say thank you to you and the Friends of the Landlocked Forest for all the work you do. It's a very special area of town and property that we have, and I know it's a lot of work to maintain. I totally understand the benefits of maintaining and restoring this meadow area for the health of the land overall, so I agree, it needs to be done, and the step of having to go in front of the Select Board every time to ask is just another step that is, I feel, unnecessary. And I feel like if you're working closely with Eileen and the team over there, and just to echo what my fellow Board member said, keeping us informed, because that land is within the purview of the Select Board, so that we know when it's happening, and it's, you know, you don't have people asking when you don't know what's going on, so that's all I would say, but I fully support this.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, in support also, seems like a superfluous extra step, and everyone's already covered what I want to say, so I'm in support, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. This is up for approval. Anything, Sagrino?
Mr. Chairman, can you just specify in terms of the notification process as part of your motion to, to approve, I presume, in terms of how you want it to work in the future, in terms of the notifications to the town?
All right, any, any thoughts from anybody on how we want to modify that? The specifications?
Through, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
What's that?
Go ahead.
I was going to say, written notification via email to Conservation and the Select Board?
Okay, just put that in motion.
Maybe one, one week in advance, or?
I would like to go, you, you probably know, excuse me, Martha, you probably know when you're going to be cutting that grass a month ahead of time anyway, right? Yeah, I would, I would say the sooner the better for us, so if it is a month, that we're there, if it happens to be, and I'm just thinking about everything else that's going on up there, whether it's the walkers, the bike riders, everyone knows that, oh, a month from now, they're going to be cutting or mowing the meadow, and we can let everybody know at that point, through this Board and through other social medias, that we can do that, so we'll probably put that in the...
Okay. If, if I could add, I mean, it's, it's not always possible to do it on a Sunday, but we are aware during hunting season that that's a good day to do it, and trying to, try to coordinate that. And in terms of notifying walkers and things, I mean, when we're mowing, people still walk through, bike through, so it's still usable, it's not like it gets, you know, destroyed. So I had a basic, I do have a motion prepared that you're going to add this email notification thing to, because I had a brief thing also that you could use if you're, wanted to use it as part of it.
I'm open up to, I'm open with the Chairman, just to hear what you have, and then I'll make a motion.
Okay. Yeah, it was the basics, it was that we, the Select Board gives permission to the Friends of the Landlocked Forest to clear the meadow one to two times a year, under the supervision of and with the permission of the Conservation Director of the Town of Burlington, to ensure that mowing is done in an ecologically sound manner with seasonally appropriate timing. And then you would add the notification.
Okay, we'll go right down to law, Jimmy?
I was going to add, make a motion, if you want to talk about that.
No, no, go ahead.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve this as Martha requested, with the caveat or condition that Conservation Commission and the Select Board's office be notified at least 30 days prior to the cutting of the, or the mowing of the meadow.
Second.
Any comments on that? Will we make a motion? No? Close motion made in second. All those in favor of that? And what should we put in there?
Aye.
5-0-0, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. And I want you to get in touch with me to arrange your private tours of the Landlocked Forest if you haven't been there yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the Scholarship Committee, want to go back to that?
Yep.
Okay. You're on. We know who you are.
Yes, I was supposed to sign in, sorry.
Just sign in, and just tell everyone, just tell everyone who you are, please, for everyone that's watching on TV.
Christine Kim, I am the Vice Chair of the Scholarship Committee, Town, the Town of Burlington Scholarship Committee. This is my first time, I think, addressing the Select Board regarding a committee, so not exactly sure how I'm supposed to do this, so forgive me. I will say that we met monthly, sometimes more. We updated the matrix of scoring to try and make it a little more even across the board for all of the high school students, so that no matter what school that they board for all of the, um, high school students, so that no matter what school that they attended, their, their ability to get the scholarship would be equal, um, as far as things like, um, AP classes, some, some schools do more, some less. So, we had an overall that included weighted and then an unrated GPA, so that we could break it down further to make it a little more even across the board. We also updated the essay to be more town-focused. It was, um, if I could for a minute, read to you what that question was. Share an experience or activity in which you have participated. How did it benefit you and contribute to the Burlington community? How would you recommend the experience could be improved for others in the future? So that they had a little more focus this year on our town and what it's done for them and what they've done for Burlington and how they could make it better. We did receive, um, about 45 applications, of which we were able to give out six scholarships of $2,000. That's a little bit less, I think, than last year. I think last year was a little more. Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Preach.
Christine, could you just tell us, uh, what were the, uh, the donations like for the year? So, this program works off the text check-off box, and people get their bills, and they can make a voluntary payment to the town scholarship fund, so I was kinda curious to see how that was, was trending.
So, it was a little bit less than the year before for the, this particular fund, but not a lot less, just a little.
All right.
Oh, we were able to, do, would you like to hear the names of the people that were able to get the scholarships? If you weren't already at the, um, scholarship night, uh, the, there were five students from Burlington High School and one from Shawshin. Thank you, Mr. Españo, for attending the Shawshin one. And their names were Azan Ali, Esther Ma, Alfen Nguyen, Aditya, Patka, Patak, Ella Woods, and the Shawshin student was Camden Atwood.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're gonna go, uh, Sarah, any questions?
I, I'm just curious, who reads all 45 essays and judges them? It's one person, or is it a...
No. So, there's six people, um, to try and eliminate score bias or, um, score subjectivity. We have, uh, of the six, it's broken down to two people, two people, two people. If the scores between the two people seem, um, not aligned with one another, like one person's score is an 80 and another's score is a 40, um, then we, as a full group, look at those and re-score those to see if there was any anomalies and how it was presented. We talk ahead of time to try and make it so that we're all on the same page, so that if I'm scoring something, it should get the same score as somebody else. There's still a bit of subjectivity to it, so, um, they're not actually, like, exactly similar, but, um, when they are very off, we all take a look and try and figure out why it happened. And it's worked pretty good, so far.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, but thank you so much for all of your work with us and for the update.
It's super fun. It's a great committee to be on. And I thank you to all the people who donate on the checkbox, because these children wouldn't have had, or young adults, wouldn't have had the ability to have these scholarships without those donations. Even though they're small, they all add up, obviously, to, um, some exciting amounts. I would say, uh, the other thing is when we score, it's blind, so the names, the, the personal information of a applicant is taken away so that we can only base it on what's in front of us. So, not grades per se, but the grades as a whole of, um, going from, did you see growth? It's not just, did you get all As, but did you maybe start off in freshman year and didn't do well, but then grew as you went through school? So, yeah, it was fun.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Christine, for all your work, and the committee on this is great. I presented it actually two, two times in the last couple of years. It's always a nice night over there at Shawshin. My question is, is there any thought to making one, at least a minimum of one of the scholarships to go to a Shawshin student? 'Cause I think Shawshin's an important part of the community, and sometimes, well, speaking to the choir, they get overlooked by Burlington. I know Bill Rickett had a whole page full of, um, scholarships, and Wilmington had a whole bunch, and we were just there with the one. I just think it would be a nice thing to make sure we get at least one every year to a Shawshin kid, just a, just a thought or a suggestion.
I would love that. I have an affinity for Shawshin.
Of course.
I would also say that, uh, we had someone come in for public comment who said that maybe we should also consider, um, a, some type of stipend to the high school seniors who are going into the military, um, for boots or those types of things, maybe one for them, maybe, um, one for the trades, because going into college is expensive, but also going into a construction trade, they have a large requirement for uniforms and tools, so maybe a tool stipend or a tool scholarship. I think these are great things to consider, and I would love to, um, maybe have a Select Board member come and chat with us about that. And then also next year, um, we really focused on the application process, but this coming year, our hope is to focus on the outreach aspect, to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make it not just available, but so that everyone, Italian, everyone who wants a scholarship will know that it's there from our town, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's go ahead.
Thanks, Chairman. Christine, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the work that you're doing. I, I don't disagree with, with Mike, um, about the possibility of, you know, more specificity, perhaps, to some of the scholarships. I think it's great, right? I mean, three, four years ago, this committee came into existence, right? The, that, that first committee built that, that, you know, rubric, that, uh, that plan, that, that plan book that kind of helped guide the path forward. And I love to hear that this iteration of the committee is looking at that and making revisions to it, and, you know, finding ways to ensure that, um, everything that we do is looking at through the lens of how can we give more to the kids, right? How can we make it more equal, more fair? You know, um, what else can we do? Like, I, I love the way that, that you're thinking about it. My biggest thing, and, and you just mentioned it, is, is outreach, right? Like, how do we let more residents know this is how they can, they can boost up a scholarship fund, right? Six K, right? But, yeah.
Six scholarships, $2,000 each.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Twelve K total, great, right? I think the first year, it was like, it was one of like four grand, and it was like three kids got it, right? Paul?
Yeah. It started off small. I mean, it's a difficult time to ask someone for a donation when they're paying their taxes is usually not the best time to, to catch.
Exactly.
I mean, unfortunately, that's the program at state level.
Right. And I know that we're, we're also restricted in terms of quote-unquote advertising, right? In terms of, you know, the, the scholarship and, and the, and the mechanism by which we do it. But I think the notion of the committee doing, creating outreach and making sure folks are aware is, I think, fantastic. And, you know, how we take that 12K and grow it even further over the next four years, right? I think is, is the next thing to really focus on. So that, to your point, and Mike, to your point, not only can we make sure that these six kids have 2K each or maybe even more, but that we can have a specific, maybe stipend for, you know, a couple of other kids, or, you know, look at it from a different lens. So, um, thank you very much for everything that you're doing, that the committee's doing. And this is great, and I look forward to an update again next year.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Christine, do you, or Paul, maybe even Paul, are we only putting this checkbox in with the real estate, real estate taxes, or does it go with excise tax, water bill? You have to refresh me on that.
I believe it's on any tax that you would pay so that, to the town, so real estate, excise, any...
The reason I bring that... That's a lot of bills.
Well, the reason I bring it up is a lot of people don't pay their own taxes, their mortgage company pays them, so they never really even open it up or look at it.
Correct.
So, I just want to make sure that every resident, again, getting the word out to the residents, first of all, thank you for everything. I mean, you've grown this, you know, so much since its inception, and as you said, every little bit helps, so thank you for all that, and your committee for all that. But do you want me to make sure that we're, as Mr. Preach said, reaching out and hitting all the residents as far as notification? And if they're not even opening a bill, then they're not seeing that we're doing this. And I know we have auto-pay now, and, I mean, I, myself, everything just hits, pays itself. I should, uh, for lack of better terms, it pays itself, but, um, we may be missing out on a percentage of residents who don't even open the envelope, so that's my only comment.
Thank you.
No, I think it's a fantastic idea. I think that the, the only thing that, uh, I like what Mike said with the, uh, more of the, the Shawshin aspect of it, but when you talked about the military and, and after-school graduates and people that weren't going to college, I think the Shawshin would cover one of those anyway, 'cause, you know, they go to Shawshin to learn the trades, and then they go out into the trades. So, I think that would cover that. But I just love the program. I think it's great, so I just appreciate the update. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to be on it. It's so fun giving away money. It's fun.
So, I just wanted to thank the committee. I was, um, around when they created this committee several years ago. Just to clarify for a couple of board members and sort of expand upon it, uh, it's actually open to any Burlington student, not just high school or Shawshin. They could go to a private school or, uh, you know, um, out-of-town Austin Prep or something like that. So, that's, it's also, I guess, the difficulty is informing those places that we have them available to. And, you know, it's probably a little bit premature, but I, I was gonna bring up during my, um, uh, Town Administrator Update, Melissa Tentaklis and I have been meeting regularly with Northeastern University, um, and they verbally committed to a half-year tuition for Burlington students, so there's a lot, I hope, there's a lot of, um, details to be worked out. Uh, they indicated to us that they receive a tremendous amount of, um, applications from Burlington residents. So, we, we need to sort of formalize how to involve the town scholarship committee in that, and...
Sure.
Again, it's, be a question of sort of how to break that down. Tuition is quite expensive now, so a half-year tuition is pretty good, so we're really excited about that, and are really lucky to have Northeastern as a partner in the community. But we'll be in touch with you on that as that sort of, uh, starts to become a little bit more formal, but we just received a, sort of a verbal commitment to that last week, so.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay. I think we're all set, just an update, so...
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Christine. Change papers. There we go. Temple. One thirty-two.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just, just, just sign the paper, and we'll get right to work.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sivarama. I am resident of Burlington. Also, I'm the secretary of, uh, the nonprofit Hindu temple in Plaza 62. We have been there for 13 years now, and, uh, of which around eight, nine years, nine, nine-plus years, we have been doing an annual procession of our temple deities. We take them in a small chariot that we, that's built on a four-by-six trailer. Congregation members pull it with all the rimes and everything that goes with it. And, uh, we go from 85 Wilmington Road to Lakasha Bakery and turn back and then come around, it's round trip around 45, 50 minutes. And, uh, I did email, uh, the Chief of Police and Sergeant, uh, Bascoron, he's aware of it, and, uh, he said he'll be able to get a couple of officers on the bike at that other day. And, uh, sixty, seventy people attend, and this being July 4th weekend, I don't know if this can be a little less or however it goes. We do it on the lunar, corresponding lunar day that matches, and that's how it happened to be on July sixth, uh, sixth this weekend, this time, so. So, I'm here to seek approval for, as you have always been helping us in this, and, uh, it's like nine-plus years now, and I'm here to seek an approval for this.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, no, no issue with this. You, like you said, you guys have been doing it for about eight, nine years now. There's never an issue. It's always, seems like a nice celebration, so...
Yep.
No issue, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And we are providing the spiritual path of progress for, a spiritual platform for people to progress in the spiritual path. And it's a platform, and a lot of residents from Burlington and the amount around the town come in, and it's be going good.
Sarah?
Happy to support this.
Thank you.
I know you've been doing it for a number of years. Have there ever been an issue? I know Mike said no issues, but like, has there ever been an issue with traffic?
No. No, we, we have the police having, providing the support all the years, and it's a 45 minutes, and we usually choose it on a Saturday or a Sunday, and this time it happened, it's on a Saturday. So, in the evening, between five and six, not much traffic, so we had no issues on the thing at all.
Okay, great. No other questions?
Uh, no, this, I mean, I support this every year I've been on the board. I'm, I'm happy to support it again.
Thank you.
Jimmy?
Mr. Chairman, no issues with it at all? With it all? The police always bring out the bicycles and this, uh, escort them back and forth, back and to, back to the temple, so never been an issue, and no problem with this at all.
Okay. Just never been an issue with any of us. Been doing this nine years, I think, here the whole time, so...
Yep.
I don't have any more issues with it. It's fantastic, very colorful. Look, uh, I'm just glad I'm not pulling along with that. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Sager, want to add anything?
Um, as the board indicated, uh, this, this event's gone on for many years in a row, and there's been no issues or no, um, um, nothing brought out by any of the departments that's been a problem, so been a very successful event.
Thank you. Uh, on that note, I'd take a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion for the procession of temple deities to occur on July 6th, 2024, from 5:30 PM to 6:15 PM.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, against? Five, zero, zero. Congratulations again.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, AMC. Right here.
Do I sign this? Okay, I wasn't sure. Thank you for having me. Uh, my name is James McMeacon. I'm the General Manager of the AMC Burlington Ten. I'm here today to request an extension of our hours from July 25th through August 8th. Instead of our 1 AM closing time, I'm requesting that we are able to close at 2 AM instead.
Okay. So, we've done this before for you. Uh, right in, right in the beginning, it says our alcohol service, uh, times would remain unchanged.
Correct.
You're not gonna be serving alcohol at that time.
Right.
Uh, we've done this a couple of other times for you with different movies that have come out. We'll go through the board, see if they have any questions, but I'm in total favor of this as always.
Excellent.
We'll start with, uh, Nick.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we, do we also, I mean, I know we've, we've done this, and there hasn't been an issue, but do we extend a detail for the nights that we're, you're...
Um, we can. Uh, well, we can request it anyway. Normally, um, sometimes with the extensions, it's only a matter of, um, extending like when we get guests out of the building.
Sure.
Um, 'cause sometimes it's just like the length of a movie. This time, like, we would be starting a little bit later. Uh, normally, our last show is under around 10:30, 10:45. Um, with Deadpool, the times I checked, um, it would be about, uh, I haven't written down. Uh, we wouldn't have any shows starting later than 11:30, um, so I can definitely, um, request have any shows starting later than 11:30. So I can definitely request for an extension of the detail.
I would just ask the police, you know, what their thoughts on it are.
Okay.
Call out their recommendation. I'm not going to say that we mandate it.
Yeah.
You know, it just popped in my head as I was looking at everything. But, you know, we've done this before. There haven't been any issues as far as I know. You know, happy to help you guys pull more folks in, especially during, you know, opening weekends. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Chairman.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Full support. You guys have done this before, and there's never been an issue. I do have a question out of curiosity. How's business been with the movies? Are you guys all the way back after COVID? How you seeing it out there?
It's doing well right now with Inside Out 2. You know, big family movie. We've been extremely busy these last two weeks. We're not quite fully caught up from COVID. Last year's the writer's strike kind of put a hindrance on everything coming out this year. So we're hoping that next year will be kind of like a, like fully returned. There's a lot of big things coming out next year. So.
Okay.
But we're almost there.
Good. Good to hear. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Jim?
I think, Mr. Chairman, no issues with this whatsoever. I wouldn't mind seeing the detail extended. I'm not going to make it a deal breaker, but that's just me. Been doing it for years. No issues. So I'm going to be okay with this.
Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no issues, no questions. None explored.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Segura, any?
I have nothing further to add, Mr. Chairman. We have very few problems at all when we've extended the hours. So, everything's working as intended up at the theater when we've had these events occur. So, no issues.
Okay. An entertaining motion, if you want to put in there about the police detail. That's up to whoever makes the motion on this one here.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to extend the operating hours of AMC Theaters Burlington from Thursday, July 25th to Thursday, August 8th in anticipation of new release, popular new releases. And we ask that they take a look into extending the detail, check with the chief and the police, and see if that's possible. And we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Motion's made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
See how the next big movie comes out.
Definitely.
Okay. 134 approval, cannabis adoption policy.
Mr. Chairman, for that one, we have Attorney Lyden from Lisa Mead's office in the virtual meeting to guide us on this one.
All right. Hi.
Oh, I think you muted.
No, she's unmuted.
How about now?
There you go.
Good.
Nope.
Lost you again.
Oh, no.
Nope. Let me chat with her or something.
She's muted on the screen.
How about now?
No.
Yes. There it goes.
It won't last long. That's what you say, "How about now?" And then you're going to lose her again.
Can't hear.
No matter how technologically adept we get, the mute button will curse us.
But she's not muted. Oh, she muted now. I could just send it and unmute to her. It would be so bad.
What's happening?
Feeling jeopardy.
Maybe she can call in on the phone.
Yeah, I was going to say, we just vote now.
Yes, I can call in.
If she can.
Finding off and then calling.
Weird. She's going in and out. Might be a loose wire or something.
Big signal. You get go, you get go, there's two on the wire. Move on, and then we'll come back to her.
I can skip that with the virtual license. That should be a quick one.
Yeah, I was going to say, Trish is online. I can unmute her if you want to go to her.
All right, we'll move ahead.
To 136.
We'll move on to the next one, which was.
136.
You want to skip Colonial Power and go to 136? Because Colonial Power's going to get a big one, too.
Yeah. All right, we'll do the verticulize. We'll go to 136 because both of the next two, the cannabis and the Colonial Power, are going to be very long, and I don't want. So we'll go to 136.
I'm going to unmute Trish. She's online for 136.
Can we hear?
Not yet. Now, hopefully, we can.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Attorney Trish Fonsworth. And with me is Dimitri Solakis. I just, I have some feedback. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. I'll let Dimitri explain the concept. We're just here for a C V license. Greco is four locations in Boston. Now, decided to expand out to Burlington, Burlington Mall, on the space next to Carman Craft. And I think the hours are 10 to 9 p.m., and Sunday noon to 6 p.m. And there's a feeding inside and a, yeah. But I'll turn it to Dimitri because I'm really getting the feedback. I apologize.
Yes, so this is Greco's sixth location. It's our first suburb location in Burlington. We're a fast Greek concept. The hours are Monday to Sunday, 11 a.m. to 9 p.m. We serve authentic Greek street food, fritos, souvlaki, Greek salad, our legendary Greek doughnuts with potatoes. We have a great menu for families, and we're excited to be in the location inside the Burlington Mall. And we're ready as soon as we get this approval, hopefully, that we can open our doors as people are lining up and popping in to see what we'll be opening, Greek food to Burlington.
Okay. Mike, questions?
No questions, Chairman. Everything looked good on Open Gov. And I have no questions or issues.
Jim?
No questions. Oh, you didn't write either, Mr. Chairman.
Sarah?
No questions. I'm excited to see it and try it when you, when you get it up and running.
Same, no questions.
Looks like we're full of no questions. So we have no questions. Mr. Segura, want to add anything?
I have nothing to add. It's just great to see another great new restaurant moving into Burlington. So, another different kind of restaurant, and I look forward to trying it.
Thank you.
When do you think the opening would be?
We're ready. You know, the restaurant is, is ready. We, we passed our health, and we passed every inspection. This is the last one.
Okay. So do you have an opening date?
As soon as we can get this license, hopefully by Friday.
So we could hold you up.
I know.
But we won't. We're all waiting to go. We're all waiting to go. So, at that, I'll take a motion at that point.
Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the new virtual license. Greco, truly Italian-Greek, 75 mils extra bike.
Second.
Motion made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
All the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, can we go back to?
She's back on, so let's see if we unmute her. Request was sent to mute. She's.
Oh, the rest of them are going to be on. Should I move around again, or?
Why does it keep muting, John? Keeps going green and then turning red.
It keeps saying, there's a button that keeps coming up and.
Shh, we still can't hear her, so.
She's there for 10 seconds to talk.
What's that?
Apparently, it works for 10 seconds, then cuts out again.
Yeah. Because she's still green now, so she should, we should be able to hear her by weekend.
Would you like me to just move this to?
No, we can't hear you, attorney.
We cannot hear you.
Well, while we're doing that, want to do citizens' time while I'm waiting? Cases. Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay with that, citizens' time? All right, so we're going to move to 137 citizens' time. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak at citizens' time? Will?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I can actually speak about the social equity thing. Obviously.
Would you come on up here and use the microphone? Because I probably didn't hear half of what you just said.
All right.
Because I'm old.
It's three minutes, Mr. Chairman.
What's that?
Three minutes.
Three minutes. Yes. Yep. So we'll let you know at citizens' time, it's three minutes you have.
So, William Seagard, a resident of Burlington Precinct 7. I'm actually the proponent and working with some town meeting members to put the zoning articles in place for the cannabis. So, for the cannabis zoning proposal for adult-use retail and allowing it. And I just want to say I'm a big advocate for the social equity policy. I think that it's kind of a no-brainer, and that the town should adopt it. So, I don't know how informed you guys have been on it. It hasn't really been a major focus for what we've been discussing. But basically, the state has separate license categories for people who have been disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs and underrepresented peoples. And so, yeah, I'm in support of it. So, anyway.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Will.
I think she's on.
She's on now?
She just went from green to not green.
Thank you, Will.
Yes.
Inter-s citizens' time?
What's that?
You need to finish citizens' time.
Attorney Lyden, are you there?
She just kept me going. Is there anybody else for citizens' time? So we can close that chapter. No one online? Okay.
I bet.
Okay. All right, so let's go back to 134. Yes? No?
She, she's going from green back to muted. I don't know why. She's green, but then shh, it flips.
Well, sometimes that's.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so this worked?
For now.
I'm so sorry. I don't know what, why that's happening. So, I'm here to speak about the social equity policy for marijuana establishments and host community agreements. You should have a social equity draft policy in front of you. If anyone wants to confirm that, I'm not.
We do. We do.
We have it.
Okay, so, the law has changed recently and requires that all host communities adopt a social equity policy, as well as additional requirements for promoting social equity businesses. And so, the first step is to adopt a social equity, equity policy. And then the second step is to adopt either a model bylaw or a regulation, which can go through the select board. The bylaw would obviously have to go to town meeting. A regulation would not. And it can look substantially the same as the model bylaw. Or you can simply adopt a policy whereby every marijuana establishment that you are granting an HCA to is granted on a one-to-one basis to social equity applicants as part of a regulation or town rule, rather than going through the entire bylaw adoption process. And the model bylaw that was put out essentially mimics the regulations put out by the CCC and restates all of the requirements of host municipalities. And so, that includes creating a website for applicants where you post your criteria for accepting an HCA, creating a score sheet, streamlining the application process, meaning that you post all your requirements for obtaining an HCA online, having a town contact person, and posting decisions of the board publicly on whether or not you've accepted certain applicants. And so, all of that is included in the model bylaw, but you can also just simply follow those requirements and adopt a regulation that says that you'll accept these applicants on a one-to-one basis and have the policy that I've created for you in place and post it on the website. But I think that's everything. If you have any questions, I can answer whatever you, I'm sure there's a lot of questions because there's been a lot of changes recently, and it just keeps evolving. And so, this is the latest iteration of what the CCC has put out. And although the regulations or bylaw is supposed to be adopted already, they are not enforcing until 2025. So you have until May 2025 to actually get this in place.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Attorney Lyden, this is John DiMizio. We have been in communication, and the reason that this wound up on the agenda today has more to do with the policy adoption and not the bylaw change. And the policy adoption went into effect this May. And correct me if I'm saying anything this wrong. So that's what prompted us to get it on the agenda for Attorney Lyden to come and just explain what it is, why we have to talk about it. And under our current bylaws, it really wouldn't change anything right now because we don't allow for it. But that's, you know, coming up soon to take a vote on that. So, I think if, if we could just talk about that one duck, the policy, and then, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no action that needs to be taken tonight because it's the first time this board is, is talking about it, is mostly to hear about it, what it was, ask some questions, and then refine the policy and come back. I mean, typically, I think we take a few meetings for a policy anyway. So I think, sort of just to set the table like that, that maybe we could talk a little bit more if there's any questions on the policy document itself, which is really the only thing that the regulations require that we have in place now.
Yep. So I'm sorry to get ahead of myself. The policy that's in front of you was the first step in the process, and it does include a lot of what I mentioned. And so, once you adopted that policy, you would then go through the, the next steps, which are all laid out within the document itself.
Okay.
This policy basically says you will follow the regulations, and here's how you're going to do it. And then the next step would be to adopt a formal regulation that basically said almost the same thing as the policy, but goes a little further.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
And Attorney Lyden, it's correct that, you know, unless something else comes up before it, we have until next May to sort of get all the ducks in a row as far as the regulation goes, and the bylaw, and that the policy is required to have now. But we don't necessarily need to act on it tonight or even at our next meeting, really. It's, this is the first time the board is seeing it tonight. So, is that correct, timing-wise?
Yeah. Yep. So, you can, I mean, the introduction is tonight. You can certainly fit with it. Make any changes that you want to make, bring that back for review. make any changes that you want to make, bring that back for review. And like I said, the enforcement wouldn't take place, you know, it's, even though it's supposed to have been in effect already, the enforcement for this won't take place until a year from now, almost. Though you do have time to, to sit with this document and review it and discuss it and speak about it again at a future meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one more time. I think it was important for us to have Attorney Lyden here with, to be able to just answer any questions the board had about the policy and about the regulation and how they differ and the timing. So I'm glad she was able to be with us. Although we didn't get off great, to a great virtual start, I think we're able to get any questions, if anybody had any now, or we can gather the questions as we deal with any policy and get back with recommendations.
Well, my personal view is that there's a lot of reading in that. I don't know if everybody had a chance to read absolutely everything that was there. I don't know if we want to postpone this to another meeting and then just go take a couple meetings, take a couple meetings to look at this. We don't need to approve this tonight, and we could put it off for our next meeting or the meeting after that. That's possible. Jimmy has it.
I have one question for Attorney Lyden. Attorney Lyden, under the policy, page two, item number five, says the town of Burlington will offer a blank reduction of a special permit fee for social equity policy, et cetera. Do we know what other towns are choosing that percentage to be?
So, some of them have waived it altogether for, say, a special permit or site plan review. Others have done a 10% reduction. It's really varied from town to town. Some have chosen not to reduce fees at all or to waive the HCA community impact fee, which nobody has really been collecting since the law changed anyway. So, I mean, reducing that fee would essentially not result in anything major. But it is in compliance if you do that, if you choose to do that.
Okay, I was just curious to see if there was, like, almost an industry standard, but apparently there isn't, so... Alright, thank you, I'm also in that.
Pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm still a little confused. Are we putting the cart before the horse here? Because we're not even sure it's gonna be approved, and it's coming up in September, so why would we, if we don't approve it, it doesn't pass in September, do we still need a marijuana equity policy, cannabis?
I would just say that it may seem strange with the timing, with Will's articles coming forward to town meeting, but this has nothing to do with the articles that the board's heard from recently from the residents that are bringing them forward. And we do allow for medical marijuana by law, so I'm assuming that we have to have these policies for that reason at a minimum, and then they'll be in place in the future, depending upon what the town decides to do. Is that correct, Elizabeth?
So, this, so even for medical marijuana, you still have to have a host community agreement in place. And so, this impacts the town, whether they choose to allow for retail or if you just stick with medical. If you're allowing additional license fees within the town, the policy has to be in place, even if you don't, really. It's just for anyone who is a host municipality, you have to have this policy in place.
Okay. You all set?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with this social equity policy. It just seems, it seems like it's the required by the state that we have it if we allow any kind of medical or recreational facility in town. I had the same question as Jim on the percentage reduction. So, apart from that, I just feel like, and maybe we want to wait and see what happens at town meeting in September, but I talked to Paul about this a little bit, but similar to how we have an alcohol subcommittee, there are so many ordinances and policies specific to cannabis, it seems like we may need to think about, as a board, having some sort of subcommittee or maybe tying it into the alcohol subcommittee around cannabis if we're moving in that direction, just to keep up with all this stuff that keeps coming out. So that's just...
Yep. You all set?
All set, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is probably a stupid question. What, what's defining us as a host community? I mean, why is the state, I guess, stepping in and saying, "You have to do this"? That question's to anybody who's...
I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing. I can't tell if you're asking me a question.
Sorry. I, I, I'm asking anybody who, who can or is willing to answer it, but my question is, what's, what's defining us as a host community and why is the state requiring this?
Oh, okay, yes. So, a host community means that you are a host to a marijuana establishment, whether, whether it's medical or retail or cultivation, processing, any, any type of marijuana facility, if it's in the municipality, has to have a host community agreement. And if a municipality does have a host community agreement, then they have to abide by the social equity policy. And the point of the, the change in regulations and the, the policy in general is that there has been a legislative change as a result of pushback from the marijuana industry that says that applicants who don't have a lot of equity or don't have great access to fund, who have been disproportionately impacted by the previous laws around marijuana, have had a prior arrest, something like that, have been disproportionately impacted to the point where they've been pushed out of the marijuana industry. And so, this is supposed to, or it's intended to, right the wrongs of the past by giving those types of facilities a leg up when applying for these types of licenses and getting through the permitting process and opening a business.
Okay. So I guess my, my follow-up question to that is, if we don't have any cannabis facilities in town, and we choose not to adopt this, why would the state penalize us?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
So my question is, if, if we don't have any cannabis facilities in town, and we choose not to adopt this, why would the state penalize us? I mean, to, to Mike's question, it's, it's absolutely cart before the horse. We have, we haven't, we're not a host community. So why would we even do this now, only other because, I should say, the only reason that we're even entertaining this is because the state said, "Hey, adopt this by May 2024", right? I mean, that was the general...
25.
Well, they're gonna start penalizing 25. They kind of want it to go on the bandwagon now, right? That's, that's how I understood this?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's because we have a bylaw that would allow for medical marijuana. So if someone were to want to come to town, we'd need to have a policy and host agreement.
Okay, so, so just because we have the, the bylaw in place, that's what's initiating us as a host community, is what you're saying?
I don't know.
Okay, that's fair, that's fair.
Nick, I believe every community has zoned an area for medical marijuana, which is required. You couldn't outlaw it like the recreational marijuana.
Right, that's right, okay. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I read it a couple times. I'm sure I'll have more questions than what I read it, but I'm glad that we're open for this discussion right now and not making a decision, because I'm not ready to, to cast a vote at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So at this point, I think we should just table this to our next meeting, and, or do you want to go two meetings away from this? Up to...
Well, summer, we only have one meeting a month, so...
That's right, too. I forgot summer was here.
Oh, my God, summertime. If it's okay with the, with you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the board, I'd like to keep this as a recurring discussion until we, you know, feel comfortable.
Bring it up at our next meeting then. That's okay? We'll just bring this up at the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay, everyone alright with that? Okay. Well, thank you. We don't need to vote on that, right?
Thank you. If you'd like, if, if everyone takes a look at this and, and they want, and you all want me to come back, I can come back in person so we don't have any technical issues next time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you, have a good night.
Yep, you too.
You too, thank you.
1:35. That's where we are, right?
Yeah.
Back and forth, back and forth. Yeah, 1:35 Colonial Power Agreement. Come on up. How you doing? Yes?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know you got a very detailed memo from our management analyst, Sam Hoffenberry. Did an excellent memo. Our hard-working consultants, Mark and Denise, have, have some pricing information for us to consider and talk about as we move municipal aggregation project forward. So, I'll turn it over to, to our consultants and...
Mark Capitano, Colonial Power, Five Mount Royal Lab.
Denise Hallard, also from Colonial Power.
Thank you.
And I believe you have the pricing in your packet this evening? So, I just wanted to quickly run through the, what you're looking at here. The top, if it's in color at the top, it just showing you the start date, and it has the end term, and what the length of that term is, then there's four suppliers, then it shows you what, in yellow on the, on the, on the far right side, what the basic service rate will be starting in August. That's the 15, 7, 7, 2. So, for the 12, the 24, things that are highlighted are the low price for the, for each one of those terms. So you can see that in supplier one, they're, they're the low bidder for the 12, the 24, and the 36. The 24 is a, a, believe it or not, a dead heat. They both had a price of 13, 330. Just wanted to, that top tranche is the choice that you've made as, as a group. That's a Meets product, and that's kind of the lowest product on the, on the, on the page. So tonight, we're in front of you to kind of talk about doing something in that, that would be where everyone would be automatically enrolled, unless they opted out of the program. Anyone on basic service would be enrolled in that, in that product. Then we're looking at, again, if that's in, in color, the two tranches that are in, in blue. Is that in color on your packet or no? If not, I'm gonna walk you through which, which ones to look at. I just don't want to bother you with the other pricing.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, suppliers, one, two, we have the...
Yep, so, and there's a 5% more price, you know, that has more mass class one renewables, a little bit greener, and then the next one down has 25% more mass class ones with the renewable. And those, again, could be a different supplier depending on term. So, the, the first supplier has the 12 and the 36, and the supplier two has the 24. Our recommendation is in the 24-month range, and the reason for that is, we're not at historic lows. So our position in the marketplace is certainly want to create some stability in savings, and, and that does out of the gate. No idea what Eversource will be come February, but we have an estimate there, both of which are underneath that estimate at this time. So I feel very comfortable with the 24-month and, and the recommendation of the, of the 5 and the 25%. What we're looking for is the ability for the administrator to have the authority to sign off on some future pricing. Hopefully, sometime...
Probably in early, early July, that would be for, I know we have September and October pricing starts here. September's super tight, I think we talked about that before. We just wanted to show it to you so you could see the difference, but for an October start, we would probably be looking at early July. You'd have to sign something by the end of July so that the mailing could go out in the middle of August, but a couple, first few weeks of July, whatever suits, assuming the pricing is similar to this.
Exactly. By us getting pricing, all that does mean is it's actionable. The administrator could sign off on it, it could become a contract in which, you know, residents would see that in, for the October timeframe. And now I'm just gonna open it up to questions.
Questions.
Mr. Chairman, so just to sort of point out sort of the basics of this, sort of the bid price was about 13.3 cents. We know that Eversource is gonna be 15.7 cents for a period of time, and then we're guessing what their next rate is gonna be.
That's correct.
Based upon some thoughtful process.
Actually, they're buying in, in May, and what market is now? No, no idea. We don't try to guess what the market will be in Feb, you know, when they go back out in December.
Yeah, they bought 50% in May, and they'll go back out for that remaining 50% in November. So we know the May buy, we're taking today's market and just coming up with the 14, 4. Of course, what happens between now and November actually sets the number, but that's what we can do right now.
Can you guys just talk to the board a little bit about what a 1-cent difference on the rate means to a residence bill and what a 2-cent rate? I know Sam detailed that a little bit in his memo, but I think that's, will help us put some perspective.
So for individual, for the 24-month, and let me just go to the, the October start, which would be the 13, 3, 2, 0 for 24 months, you're looking at about, almost 2 and 1/2 cents, so each penny is worth about $6. The Department of Public Utilities says use 600 kilowatts as the average consumer. So if you, if you do that, 1 cent is $6, so that'd be $12 and another half, so somewhere, somewhere around $15 or so per month, if you're looking at an annual basis, you know, you're looking at upwards of $180 per year. At this current 15, 7 rate, that, that will change, though. I know it will change, it won't be 15, 7, I don't know, it could be higher, it could be lower. Right now, we're estimating it'll be slightly lower.
And how does this pricing compare to other aggregation deals that you've been involved in in terms of the bid rate versus sort of...
This is a very attractive rate, I can tell you right now. The load profile for Burlington is advantageous. We have seen some, in the western part of the state, some high 12s, almost no one this low here in the eastern part of the state. So, the load profile is a beneficial load profile. I can tell you that.
Paul, anything to add, or...
No, I just wanted to clarify, just to sort of put some numbers behind what savings of a penny on the rate actually sort of translates to. I mean, it doesn't sound like much when you hear it, but I think over the course of 600 kilowatt-hours, I think it starts to add up over time.
Alright, thank you. Nick, we'll start with you.
You know, I, quite enough compared to the last time we had this conversation, I don't really have any questions, per se. I'm actually curious, Sam, if you have anything you want to add to this whole conversation, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
So, just to lay out, I think specifically, the ask, so that people at home and for the board to understand is, I think we want to establish the start date, how long of a contract you're thinking for, and then which of the opt-in greener options are the ones that you want to go forward with. And then with those parameters in mind, Colonial can go out, ask for the firm number that they're willing to sign on to, and if Paul thinks that those numbers are in line with what was presented before, and in line with what you guys were hoping, given those three other parameters, to then be able to sign so that we can move forward. My personal opinion is that the October start date is almost the exact same pricing as September, and so having the extra time, like, this week in particular, is kind of nice. But I think that then from there, the thing I laid out in the memo is the 5% and the 25% renewable options are the same price as projected or still less, so people can get greener energy and not have to pay more than they currently are for electricity, which is great if they choose to opt for that. I know that there might be some people who want us to have 100% option, but just given how much more expensive that is, I don't know how many, if only just one, switches to that, right? So I think having still an economical option in those places is a good idea. So, I think having still an economical option in those places is a good idea.
Nothing else this time, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the recommendation is to choose two options, two and four?
Yes, of the six presented, to pick two opt-in options. So, there will be one that everyone moves to, that is the opt-out, and then you can either opt into two other slightly greener packages, or you could opt out of municipal aggregation in general and stick with ever-source basic service, or if you're feeling risky, to do the independent contract.
So, at least in my opinion, the initial meeting was very, very confusing for me because I, you know, we're not into energy aggregation, but your summary combined with your Excel spreadsheets clears it up for me. This is very well laid out, and now I know what I'm thinking about. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing to add, but I'd be in favor of the October start date, just because it would give us more time to let the residents know, get people aware of what's going on, and make sure everyone's kind of comfortable with what we're going to do. I'm in favor of the program and...
Moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Thank you. So, in terms of the target's start date, I'm just going through the asks, I would say I prefer October for all the reasons you've already stated in the past. I appreciate the analysis done on the greener options, because those were, I had no idea what I was looking at. And just to be clear, when we say for the two greener options that were recommended, numbers two and four, and when we say plus 5% and plus 25%, that's not plus 5% in cost, that's in, it is?
No, no.
No, okay.
You're going to ask Class 1 REX.
It's plus 5% in how green it is or something like that? Okay.
A certain time, so there's 62%, all, ever source has 62% renewables, that's a combination of Class 1 REX, Class 2 REX, just various shades of green. Mass Class 1 REX are considered the gold standard, so you would be buying plus 5% more mass Class 1 REX than required by law, and then plus 25% more mass Class 1 REX. So, you're adding on to the top of the 62%.
Okay.
In total, and the minimum requirement for Class 1 REX is 24% right now, so it would be 29% and then the 49%. Just Class 1.
So, and then, in terms of the asks, I would agree with the options two and four for the greener options for people to choose from, based on Sam's analysis of just environmental benefits and potential cost savings, it just makes sense for our community, I think, those two options. The other ask was how long of a contract, that's where I get a little fuzzy, and I lean on experts, I think you said 24 months?
Yes.
That's who we're looking, given this pricing, correct.
Okay, so, yeah, I don't, I don't, what if we said 12? What if 12 months, what if we said 36, whatever, like what, what happens if we...
Nothing happens, the contract is just 12 months long, and that means we're going to go out in the market longer. So, normally with aggregation, one of the things that the utilities can't do is deliver stability, where this, you would know that the contract, the price of electricity was going to be this rate for the next 24 months. I could understand if someone said to me 36 months, there's a lot of turmoil in the world, I have no idea if they're going to start dropping bombs through Europe or what have you, or the Middle East blows up, or, so, I can, I can put my hands around why someone might think 36 months, it's just where we are, I think to myself, when we're not at a very historic low rate, let's not take the longer-term contract. If prices were to fall down even further, I would say maybe we do something a little bit longer on the next contract. That's my, that's my view on the market.
Would just allow us to go out in the marketplace earlier for the next start date and potentially get something.
Got it. Okay, so I guess I would recommend the 24 months based on, based on that. And then, so those are the three asks from tonight, but I guess just moving forward in terms of getting the word out, I guess there needs to be more work with that and educating folks and who opt-in, opt-out thing gets some people a little nervous. So, just making sure people are aware of the program, and we can get the word out in as many ways as possible.
Absolutely, and once we have a, you know, a term and rates and products, it's going to be easier to quantify that and put it in, you know, press release and public notices and mailing will go out in the middle of August, and then information sessions, come and answer questions, select board meetings, senior center.
Senior centers, depending on where you want us, at what time. We're happy to do, you know, in the morning, in the afternoon, in the evening, at the senior center, whatever that is, and then, again, if we wanted to do something here that people can watch, if we had a PSA, we could run it on the local station, just explaining what was going to come, those kind of things, so that, the goal is to inundate, meaning it's in the newspaper, it's here, I've given you this field, that's the hope, and I don't expect that there'll be two weeks of a little kicked-up dust and then things will settle right down.
And I know you previously asked about FAQs, and we will provide those. There's also, if you go to colonialpowergroup.com, if now, if you just want to get kind of acquainted, Colonial Power Group down on the main page, if you click "Our Communities" and click on Burlington, there's already a page set up, it's been set up through the whole approval process. There's a lot of questions and answers on there, just some general information, obviously, when or if the town signs a contract, we'll put the rate and term information on there, there will be an opt-in, opt-out button, but the page is out there, we'll work with Sam and Paul to get the town's website linked over to that page, but there is some general information out there for folks just want to get acquainted with, some questions and answers.
Got it, okay. And I, on that note, I know we want to inundate, but we also don't want to overcomplicate or, you know, oversaturate with information. Really want it to be simple, and I, like Jim said, Sam's memo was really great, that's explaining it in very simple terms. So, yes, inundate, but don't sort of drown people in information.
And we believe in...
Don't say Class 1 REX anymore.
We should probably say local projects.
That's just, those are just my comments, that's all. And thank you all for your work on this, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My next question's actually for Sydney. I was wondering, maybe potentially, if maybe BCAT could do like an in-depth on this, because those are very helpful and maybe something easily shareable on social media, just an idea, I don't know how busy you guys are, but...
It's like you've been inside of our communities.
Yeah, so, I mean, I know you guys probably have a lot of stuff we can share on social media too, but BCAT does a really great job of, they have in-depth reports on stuff, and I think the way they explain things, and it gets, they have a far reach out into the community, they would, they could help get the word out there.
We agree.
Thank you, thanks, Mr. Chairman, thanks, Sydney.
A little something, okay, my turn. Listen, I like the program, I think it's great, I think it'll be good for the town. What I don't like is being forced to do something I don't want to do. So, that's where a lot of people that have watched this meeting the last time, I won't say a lot, there's been a few people that called me up and said, "How can you just put me in a program without even asking me?" So, and they're all seniors. So, that's the part that, you know, gets to me the most, and like Sarah had said earlier, that we have to get it out there, whether it's over at the REX Center for the seniors or whatever it is, BCAT, whatever it is, we have to let them understand how to opt out of this program, because if they don't want to do it, I don't know anybody in the world that likes to be told what to do. Right? Especially you, I don't forget Paul. But anyway, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm really looking at right now. As far as the program goes, I think it's good, but the older senior citizens make me nervous about whether or not they want to change. They don't like, they don't like change to begin with, so now you're telling them what they have to do. So, I think what Sarah's ideas about, you know, going, going through all the different avenues to get to, I think it could work out for us. So, with that note there, I've said my piece, and then you guys can, Mr. Segre, you have something else?
Yeah, so if we could just get general direction from the board that, generally in favor of what's been presented tonight, then we can have these guys back on July 15, talk about the different steps to get the word out to the community proposed and what's been done, and, you know, we'll have a more formalized plan as to how to communicate this to the community.
Okay, who wants to take that?
Mr. Chairman?
To make a motion for that.
Well, Mr. Segre, are you looking for us to approve it tonight or approve, move it to the next meeting and approve it? No, no, we just need to know that 24-month term... Two and four. These products, and that you'd be willing to sign off on that, and then that'll give me the ability to know that I can sign off on that for an October start date in general. So, would our next meeting be okay to do that, or are you looking for a vote tonight? I think they said maybe the beginning of July.
Right, we have until the end of July to sign a contract for an October start.
You didn't want to miss the deadline.
But, you know, if you do it earlier in the month, you know, if you don't like what you see, you can take another crack at it before the end of July, I mean, certainly the 15 is fine, but, you know, earlier.
And I would just say, if you have the ability to approve it tonight, it would be good, because we could show them pricing, I'm making up the date right now, on the 10th. If for some reason, the market was up and it was 13.7, and you didn't feel comfortable signing off on that, we put it off, and we could try it on the 12th or the 15th, and if the rate came down to 13.3 and then you wanted to sign, no problem, he could sign, and we can still come back and see you. Maybe we, when we come back to see you, he hasn't signed because he's not happy with the pricing at that time, and we'll need to talk at some point in August.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would it be okay if we just voted to authorize him to sign?
That's exactly...
If the, if the rates were amenable to the town administrator?
Yeah, I think that's what we're looking for here.
Yes.
Okay, so then, I'm going to go ahead and try to make a motion here, everyone bear with me, that, the motions to authorize a town administrator to sign on behalf of us an acceptable term at 24-month rate, a 24-month term, right? With options two and four is presented as, as secondary supply options? Yeah, that's ish, yeah. He's shaking his head, so I'm, I want to make sure I say it right.
I'll second ish it. Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would, the only thing I would ask, could I please just ask, is there anything, possibility that your impression on the term may change between now and the next couple of weeks, term of the contract?
So, if the, if the term fell even further, I would have the conversation, just, if the, if it went screaming, if the rates went screaming up, I would have that conversation about maybe we do something even shorter than the 24, if the rates came down, I would say somewhere below 12.5, I might even talk to you about doing something 36 months.
So, so I think as a part of the motion, obviously, we're targeting October, I want to add that in there, and then I want to make sure that the motion is, is in the realm of understanding that Paul has, as a town administrator, the authority to discuss with Colonial Power, the optionality depending on the fluctuation of the market.
Perfect. I'll still second that.
Second that. You okay with that, Paul?
Yes, thank you.
So, motion's made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Again? See, 5-0-0.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work on this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sam.
And thank you, Sam, helpful memo.
Yep.
All right, 1:38, this is a public hearing, so, hold on one second, I have a cheat sheet over here. Six, seven, thirty-eight. I'm going to open the public hearing. Need to open it. I can either approve the notice as written, somebody like to do that, or we just...
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the notice as written.
Second. Time, date, location, purpose needed. Okay, we'll discuss the topic.
Do you vote on that?
We need to vote.
What's that?
We need to vote on that.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Are we going to vote on that?
Your motion is second?
I think it's second, who did this?
Yes. Nick seconded.
Motion's second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0-0.
Four.
Four, yeah, truly, he's not here. I'll let him in anyway. He told me on the way by I was going to vote for him. Okay. Discuss the topic.
Hi, for the record, my name is Hong Yeh-han, working for MBNC Engineering Company on behalf of Verizon to apply for the grant location at 33 Chestnut Avenue. Verizon is planning to install a guide pole to just install a guide wire to connect to the utility pole across the street. So, it's a pretty simple street forward.
Is it any simpler than that, does it? All right. You guys want to discuss it? Anybody want to comment on this at all? You have a question? All right, Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just based on the map, so this is an additional pole being put directly across from a pole that's not replacing that pole?
No, that pole is a little bit leaning, so the Verizon is trying to install a pole across the street at the pulling that pole to make it, you know, balanced.
A support?
Yeah.
An additional support for the wire?
So, yeah, just only be a guide wire across the street, no power line, no teleco, just a guide wire.
Okay.
And a new pole.
And to, I don't know what the process is, do the butters of that pole need to be notified?
There's, it's right... There will be in the public right away.
Sorry, what?
It's in the public right away, so, it's going to be...
They don't need to be notified?
I don't think so, yeah.
Okay, just wondering, because it's right up against somebody's property, so, I don't know if we're going to be hearing about that.
Yeah, we will stay in the public right away, yeah.
Okay. My other question is, I've never seen one of these installed, what is, how, how much will that affect the traffic on that road? I know it's a pretty...
It's, based on the current street, there is a sidewalk being added, so the pole will be next to the sidewalk, close to the grass, so they will be in the grass area.
So, the actual installation won't affect like cars getting in and out of that?
There will be, I assume there will be land closures temporarily, take a couple hours.
Couple hours?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's all my questions, thank you.
Mike?
Is there a reason we can't take out the, thank you, Mr. Chairman, take out the existing pole?
The current on the Chestnut Street, you look at a map, there is one going west and then stop there, they turn 90 degree to the business. That pole is the end of the pole, kind of that end, to serve the business, so that, that pole was unbalanced, so they need another guide wire to pulling it across the street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I feel like that didn't answer his question, so I apologize. Why can't you just replace the leaning pole?
It's not really leaning, because it's unbalanced, it's leaning a little bit, so it's still in a, well, good range, but the thing is, we try to balance it.
So, it's leaning enough that you need a guide wire?
Yeah.
Not so much that you'd want to replace it?
Yeah, we just, yeah.
But you understand how, like, it's, it's, I'm sorry, you, you see the, the oddness in the request, right? I mean, just replace the pole, it won't be leaning anymore.
No.
There will be two poles across each other of the street.
Replacing, the reason to install a pole is not to fix the leaning, it's just the weight, the power is unbalanced, the pole is not balanced right now, the power.
And so, because the pole's not balanced, right? It's leaning.
The 90-degree turn, it's only one side is pulling it, so we need to install a guide wire to pull the other side. Probably, I mean, over the years, people adding more line to it, make them unbalanced, they used to be just alone, standing there.
So, this is, you've referenced out twice the, the 90-degree bit, go into that for a second before I get grumpy here. When you say something's going 90 degrees, break that down for me, 90 degrees in which direction?
What's that?
So, I assume the power is on, all the lines are running on that side of the street?
Yeah.
Where the existing pole is.
There also are existing guide wire going west on the Chestnut Street, but because the 90-degree turn, it's still unbalanced towards the business.
Okay, so, which, I'm sorry, which 90-degree turn are you referring to?
If you look at a map, so going west on the Chestnut Street and going south, that's the current serving the business. There's a pole in the parking lot with all the power lines, everything, and there's a guide wire keep going towards Chestnut Street, towards west. So, basically, you see that, there is nothing pulling to the north, so this is where I'm trying to install that guide pole.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing something. Humor me for a second, okay? And on a map, I don't know if you have a map in front of you, or we can pull map up on the screen, I need you to point to, to the areas you're talking about, because I'm not picturing it in my head, and I'm just leaning towards, no pun intended, that, and you just replace the pole, like I'm still not getting the need for the guide wire. Am I, am I the only one here?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My, a little bit of experience with this, a similar situation. So, basically what it is, and you'll see this on Wilmington Road in Wilmington, I'm sorry, Route 62 Wilmington, they've actually put guide wires into big trees, there's weight on two sides of the, two corners of the pole, so say there's north, southeast, and west.
Yeah.
The north and east side have weight because of the cables, and now those are copper, there's lead, there's all kinds of kit.
Yep.
And those two, even if you replace the pole, about 90% of the weight is going to be in those two directions, and the new pole is going to lean as well. So, the guide wire on the west side is holding it from going that direction, and this guide wire will help it go from the other direction, the opposite of the two heavy directions. So, there's two heavy sides to that pole, carrying all the weight. So, that's what it is, so even if you put a new pole up, you're still going to have two heavy sides on the next pole.
Right, okay, thank you, Jim. That, that helps clarify all...
Thank you.
That, that makes, that helps clarify all of what's, what's going on. So this is a weight distribution issue?
Yes.
Okay. All right. How, how high up on the pole are you putting the guide?
Normally they install a sturdy lumber, so that would be 25-foot tall, on the pole top. So the guide wire will be right on the top.
Okay. Okay. So, there's no other way to balance a pole, other than adding a guide wire?
Yeah, that's basically very common practice, yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm not trying to take my frustration out on you.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
I just, we have a general problem growing in town where there's double poles, there's leaning poles, there's, you know, half of poles that have been sawed off with a pole attached to it, all because Verizon doesn't feel like moving their wires, right? And in a state where continually lines get added to poles, one would assume, from an engineering standpoint, that somebody would devise a way to keep the pole strong enough, as is, to hold the weight of the wires, as opposed to just running more stuff across our roads, right? Like, I mean, that's just, you're literally cluttering up space, right? Not you specifically, obviously, but it, it's a, you caught me on the wrong day. It's just, we're adding more stuff to our roadways, instead of stepping back and actually fixing the problem, I guess in a more ingenuative way? But I feel like if I say yes to this now, anytime we heavy up a pole, because one more line's gonna get added to it, one more service is gonna get put on it, and that pole starts leaning, just out of guide wire, is gonna be the default answer. So, from where I sit, I would like a more creative way to keep a pole straight, with the stuff that's got on it, than just a guide wire. And maybe, I'm not smart enough to assume that there's an, an option beyond a guide wire, and maybe this is all for naught, but, you know, I'll step off my soapbox at that point. Thank you.
Jim?
I have nothing further.
Mr. Sagarino?
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Priest brings up a good point. These guide wires are pretty darn ugly, and it sounds like there's already one down to the ground.
Yeah, but again, we try to balance the power, the physics, you know? For example, we've got one pole, next pole, once they're in line, you're still at the end of one, only one side pulling, you need a guide wire coming down to the ground. Same thing on other side, you need to come to the ground. But when the line turned, because the street configuration was keep changing, if you, the street goes this way, the line gonna go that way, you gotta have guide, guide wire pulling this way, it's unavoidable, it's just a physics. I mean, the ultimate solution is everything goes underground, but that's more costly.
I, I, I don't disagree. It seems like a, a cheap way to balance the pole, and like you say, I think we may wanna put some more consideration into this, just given, I mean, I don't want the pole to fall either, and this may be common industry practice, but I think it, it would be worth investigating a little bit further, just to see if there are other solutions that are not as unsightly as adding a pole with a, a wire across a nice street, so.
Yep.
Okay. So, a couple months ago, we had a company in here that wanted to dig a hole, put a whole unit in. We said not until some of the double poles were gonna be gone. They've been doing a great job taking out the double poles and the triple poles. So my personal feeling is if we say no to this, maybe they'll come up with a better idea, instead of just keep putting poles in our town, left and right. Just my thought. We vote any way we want, but my thought process is if we say no to this, that's one less pole they're gonna get at this time. Do we take the chance on this pole falling down? Does that fall on us if we say no to this?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend just maybe continuing the hearing to your next meeting, just to, to maybe do some, a little bit more investigation.
We can do that, too.
Follow-up questions, Mr. Chairman? So is the reason why you need to have the guide wire to another pole, because you can't go down to the ground, 'cause it's street?
Yeah, that's street, yeah. Do you have to go across the street and then pull in that direction? I mean, physically, that's the only way it can be done. If you build a new one, it's still gonna look like that. I mean, by the time, they probably didn't do it right, 'cause the pole turning.
Can you strengthen the pole?
Again, the pole is pretty flexible. If you've got a space, you can just run the guide wire directly to the ground.
Please understand, our frustration is not with you, we know.
I know this is...
You can't bend physics, we understand.
The whole...
It's just a problem that keeps popping up everywhere, and it's, it's unsightly, and it just seems like there would, there has to be a better way.
Yeah.
And I know, our frustration, please, is not with you, it's, it's with physics.
Actually, I heard just the news that in California, they started doing, proposing to do everything underground. The cost was a million dollar per mile, to bring everything underground.
It's almost worth it. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I have a, so, assuming that the board would vote yes, okay? Because that road has the MBTA bus stop at it, do you know what, several hours of the day you'd be occupying?
That's kind of up to the town. We can do it, you know, half, half hour, half peak hour, or even weekend.
Okay. Yeah, I just know that that's a, the bus comes up 62, and then turns on the Chestnut there, 'cause the stop is at the intersection of Chestnut and 3A, by 328 Cambridge Street. So, in terms of, like, overall, in not meeting the, the people who need the bus, I'd find a, I don't know if it's a three, four-hour thing, but find that, that pocket of time where, you know, you're, you're not on a, on a bus route schedule, I guess. But, Mr. Chairman, I'd be, I'd be open to, to continuing this to our next meeting.
We still have the, we still, I believe we're still in an open...
Yeah, perhaps you can request a hear from any members of the public and close that part of the hearing, and then continue it, and the board can have further deliberations on it in your next meeting on July 15th, anytime 6:00 or after.
Yep. So right now, the public hearing is still open, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
We gotta see if they hear.
Oh, I didn't see any hands up there, so. John, any hands up? You don't see any? Anybody in the room? Just making sure now.
Sam, anything? You got the only one out there, so I figured I'd ask.
Well, nothing.
All right, so now there are no comments?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made.
Second.
Second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. 5-0-0. At this point, we can take a, a motion to postpone this till the 15th.
Continue, continue.
Continue, sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this to our next meeting, 7:15, on or after 6:00 P.M.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the intro.
Thank you for your patience. All right. Now, where are we? 139. Town clerk. Committee elect appoint. Thank you. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a discussion about the town's initiative to consider the future of the town clerk position.
Yep.
I think at our last meeting, we talked, the board talked about forming a committee with two select board members, I believe it was four town meeting members and one election worker. We did get the word out to the press, and we did receive letters of interest, emails of interest from several residents, and I think the board, as a first step, was looking to at least form a committee tonight to work with on this through the course of the summer, as September will be here before we know it, so.
Okay. Let's start with Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, oh, two minds on this, I was thinking, I know Elliot is a longtime election worker for the committee. The uniqueness of Florence Leoni being both an election worker and a town meeting member, and then we have four other town meeting members that applied. I know we said we're gonna limit it to four. If we go to limit it to four, my suggestion would be to go by seniority, the four most senior town meeting members. And my other thought is, we need this list, because we have the unique, we have the four town meeting member box checked, we have an election worker box checked, but we also have the uniqueness of Florence's credentials of being both an election worker and a town meeting member. Yeah, I know we'll be adding one more person to the committee, but I'd be happy with going that route, or if that's not too cumbersome to add one more person.
At that point, we take it from 7:00 to 8:00, right?
We do have it someplace.
Yeah.
It, it's an ad hoc committee, so it can have as many members as the board wishes to have on there, so.
Okay. Mike?
Mr. Chairman, why don't we take the whole list, we take the least senior member, make them an alternate member? Because it's summer, and if a person is not there, that person can be a voting member. That way, we take them all, summertime, you know, it's always hard to get people together in the summer, and this way you have a, you know, you keep an odd number in case of votes.
Okay. Sarah?
I disagree with the keeping the most senior, or putting them as the priority with a committee like this, we're looking for a diversity of thought, and keeping people who've been, you know, I love my town meeting members, but we have all people who've been on town meeting for decades, we're not getting the point of view of somebody who might be newer, and have a different perspective. So I, I did, I personally disagree with that. I would prefer to take all six, plus the two side members.
Okay. Mike?
I mean, Nick, are we...
Oh, who am I? Excuse me. Yeah, I mean, you know, when I, when I first looked at the list, you know, I went down and, and kinda just gave little checks off, and had Mr. Chikovsky, Ms. Leoni, Mr. Murphy, and Mr. Alpert as, as the top four that I would've gone with. But if we're gonna take all six, and, you know, have folks as alternates, and, and try to create that diversity of voice, I'm fine with that. You know, I think that this is a, a conversation worth having, you know, and when we pulled the, the committee together, I know that I kinda wrote the, or told the line of trying to keep the committee, quote-unquote, reasonable size, but I think that, you know, it's, if the committee's gonna do the work, and, you know, report back to us with a recommendation, then, you know, let's, let's create some diversity of thought. So, I'm, I'm, I'm open to what the board is, is willing to do here.
My thoughts. I think the six that are there are very good. I don't think with the, with the two select people, which would be me and Sarah, we've already discussed that, that gives us eight, that's an even number. Do we go with one more? So make a, so if there's something, there's, so there's nine of us on that board? Or do we...
Just one point, we did get one applicant who wrote in, who's not actually a town meeting member or an election worker.
Correct. I believe they had served on some town committees, and may have just confused town committee with town meeting.
Is that the one on the bottom of this email?
Yeah.
And it says on the, unclear if the resident's status is a town meeting member.
So, I mean, that changes the makeup of the...
Yeah.
Right.
Committee, but...
Are these the only ones that we got?
Yeah.
That's it, right there, huh?
I mean, we could also take somebody off this list and make it a, make it a cool seven again.
Who do you take out?
Can I put me on the spot?
Just take all six, make them all full members with you two.
I think, I'm sorry, jumping in, but I think that a committee like this, having it an odd number is not absolutely necessary, this is really more like...
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion, provide feedback, doing research, and things, things like that. That's my personal opinion.
Okay. Gentlemen, any, any thoughts on the even number of eight?
No, like I said, I was one of two thoughts, and that was one of my thoughts, keep all six, or reduce it. I'm good with the six.
Okay. Okay, well, at that point, I'll take a motion to make it the fabulous eight.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to be accept. All names submitted, I'll read them, Elliot Chifoski, Florence Leoni, Reed Cooper, Jack Kelly, Chris Murphy, and David Alpert, as members of the town clerk committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. 5-0-0. Thank you.
Next.
Electronic sign. Where are we at? That's my papers here tonight. Yep. There it is. I got it. Okay. September town warrant. Mr. Sagarino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this is just a standing warrant, agenda item, to discuss our warrant article for the electronic sign. Earlier this week, I forwarded to the board sample sign policy that town council had provided to us, as well as a draft of recommendations from a traffic safety officer, Sergeant Abaskaroon, in terms of, you know, good policy for electronic signs like these, for the board to consider. We had a, a group of town facilities members, as well as procurement and budget director, Rachel Leonardo, had a meeting today on site out there, trying to work out the dimensions of the sign, and the, sort of, the procurement process and the bidding for it. As a reminder, the electronic screen that we had moved forward for last time was a four-foot by eight-foot in size, intended to sort of replicate the size of the banners that were out there now presently. I do recall at the time that the goal was to sort of have electr, the electronic screen to replicate a banner, in other words, no moving parts, no excessive animation or anything like that, but sort of that it would sort of look like a banner, just albeit an electronic one, and just very clear, concise, to the point, you know, book sale, at the library, date, time, you know, that type of thing. So, you have the policy, I know that that was one of the things the town meeting was looking for at the time, at the last time this proposal was brought forward. So you have that to consider, you have the thoughts from the police department on safety of the sign to consider. Last item, I know that we had funded the, the sign through ARPA funds the last time, was the proposed funding source, and my discussions with John, we still have the ability to do that, so we should have better information at our next meeting on the dimensions, possible dimensions of the sign, the possible cost of the sign, and, and some, some further information like that. So, at this point, I'll just turn it over to the board for you to discuss any of those items.
Let's start with Sarah.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I really appreciated the memo from Sergeant Abaskaroon, with all of his concerns laid out, and how to mitigate all the safety issues, with a whole lot of research done, so, props to him for providing that. I think that'll be really useful information to have when we come in front of town meeting. I did have a few questions on the policy. So the policy goes into a lot about the application process, and, so what is the application process we're getting a sign up here now?
We essentially have a list, if it's any town department sponsored event. And then there's a list of pre-approved, sort of grandfathered-in other events that have been accepted over time and sort of been considered as approved because they've always been approved, more or less. So the application process to date has simply been an email to our office requesting placement of a banner on the corner. We check the list to see if it's a, if it's a grandfathered-in event. And then we administratively reach out to the board members to see if it's anything that they wish to discuss at a future meeting. We hear Lynn takes in the feedback individually. And then if it's, if it's just standard banner that we always have, it's administratively approved by me. If it's something that, that someone wants to talk about, it gets brought before the board.
Okay. It sounds like a much more formal process than the policy, the draft policy that we have here in terms of, you know, formal application, coming before the board every time. Seems a little much and it seems like it could be handled a little bit on the back end.
Oh, I don't disagree. Like I say, that was, that was just Town Council's first, first pass at it. And we sort of need to make it Burlington, Burlington specific.
Realistic and logistic, feasible based on what we have on our agendas. One other thing, I didn't see any mention of it in the backup, but maybe this came up at the meeting with Rachel today. I was just looking forward to other concerns that might come up is the potential for someone hacking in to the sign and getting IT and cybersecurity issues checked out. Just, we don't want any potentially, I don't know, offensive, politically motivated, whatever, somebody hacking in and just making sure that those, if any of those concerns come up, they can be like, nope, we have this. These are the people in charge of it. This is the process and these are, you know. So maybe getting IT involved in that.
I think that's a great suggestion. I think we all know that there's nothing that's completely safe from a, from a hack, unfortunately. But I do think that's a great suggestion just to see how we can get them involved and what they may recommend on that. I think so sort of one of the bigger things that's gonna is what type of banners go up there? Is it just town-sponsored? I think this is, this will be the real big question the board has to, you know, what type of town organizations does the board want to open it up to? Those will be some of the key questions because we'll have the ability. It's a little bit easier with just the fixed banner. There's less time there, but we will have the, the ability to provide, you know, more than one banner a day up there if we have the electronic sign. And again, it's going to open it up to a lot of possibilities, but also a lot of potential difficulties in deciding what goes up there. So I think some thought put into sort of what the board envisions for the use of the sign in terms of what is the criteria for an event or an organization to get up on the sign. I think it will be one of the key things you need to consider as you move forward.
So yeah, I think this is on the right track. Was this policy something that town meeting wanted to see before the zoning change? Is that what it was?
It's a select board policy, but there were questions about sort of what would the policy be? So yes, more or less.
So is this going to be provided to them in the backup?
If you're able to approve it by then, yes.
Okay. I have no other questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Erica took what I wanted to add is I wanted to thank Sergeant Abascaloon for his memo on this. It was excellent. I liked a lot of the points he had. Quickly readable, avoid a busy-looking display, very concise display change. I think we should put all of those into our thinking here. That's all I had.
Mr. Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I want to echo what Sarah and Mike said. You know, Sergeant Abascaloon's level of effort on this was, was great. I think, you know, both his memo, you know, the, the work that Rachel's doing with DPW and, you know, the policy, wherever it stands as draft, I think there are worthwhile things to include in the backup, but all things that we should translate into the presentation and really walk town meeting through it so they fully understand where we are and where we want to go, at least initially, right? You know, I would, I would almost rather have a more intense application process to start because Paul, to your point, we're going to get flooded with people going, oh, you can do 10 of these a day. I want one now, right? Or, oh, it's overlapping. Let me get in there, right? And we have to, I think, be very judicious with our decision-making to start. And then we can modify the policy as we kind of get a good groove going with that. You know, I think to, Sarah, it's a great question about the whole hacking, you know, component of that, that's all possible and, you know, what the technology looks like. You know, so I think questions that we might not have answers specifically for town meeting for. The hope here, I think, is that we've amassed enough information and enough clarity around the request that town meeting feels comfortable supporting it. And then we can iron the rest out as we move forward, which was my original intention, you know. But want to make sure that we have all of our i's dotted and our t's crossed for town meetings going around. But that's all I wanted to add, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sergeant Abascaloon's information is phenomenal. Really added things that we didn't think of, the anti-glare glass for the headlights, all this stuff. That was really, really good. That's a great job, Pete. See, I, I see this as a replacement for what's out there now. So I don't see a strain too much farther or further away from how we handle it or we run it now. Town events, town agencies, and then the grandfathered events that we've allowed in the past. So that's the way I envision this, is a replacement as opposed to all kinds of new requests coming in. I'm sure there'll be some, but I, I see this as a replacement for the two falling pieces of four-by-fours that we have up there. But I think this is a step in the right direction, both from PETA and from the guys in the policy. And hopefully we'll clean it all up and have it ready and get approved in September at town meeting. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This, this policy is going to be, Mr. Abascaloon did a great job on it. I think our biggest hurdle is going to be is what we, what we decide later on, what goes on and what doesn't go on. Because there's going to be, every organization's going to want something. Every single person's going to want their child's birthday up there for some reason, every single. So I think the hardest part for us is to come up with what, what is, I mean, we already have some that have been there for, I don't even know how long, how long some have been up there, Paul? 10, 12, 15 years? You know what I mean? So that's not the issue with some of the other stuff that may come up. And I'm going to feel the same way as I do with the flags on the carmen, none. I'm going to feel the same way about that as I am about that sign out front. So just letting you know where I'm, where I'm heading with this, all right? Okay. So it was just open for discussion. Anything else I could add there?
Uh, no. Like I say, I think you're, you're on the right track. I think the policy as to what is, can go on, on the electronic sign needs to be clear, concise, but also have some sort of flexibility, you know, for some reason. If, you know, one of the high school teams went to state championship and you want to do a congratulations up there or, you know, some other communities do some fun things like with Celtics in the, in the world championship. So you have to really put some thought into that. And again, it's, it's, it'll be, the policy will be subject to change in the future and you can add, subtract to it. But I think going into town meeting, you're going to want to have something that's, that's very clear and easy to understand.
We've done that before where the girls have won the national championship in cheerleading. We put up signs at the beginning of town and, and driving into town, there was a banner up there for the girls when they did win nationals back in the day when they, of course, they used to win every year. But, I mean, so there's always going to be exceptions to the rules, but, okay. Any other discussion on this from anybody? No? Okay. 141 approvals. Annual committee appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've compiled the list of committee appointments for the board and the town administrator. You have the list in front of you. As the board is aware, Mr. Hockenberry recently did a survey of our committee. So we'll be reporting back to you in the, in the very near future on the feedback that we got from, from the committees in terms of what the board could do to support them better, what they could use from us, et cetera, how the committee's functioning. But for tonight anyway, we have these committees that are ready to go with the reappointments. The first three are select board appointments directly. The Audit Committee, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Scholarship Committee. And then we move on to the Town Administrator Committees. And we'll have a couple more committees to bring back to you over the summer that we'll, we'll still be working on. And all these folks have indicated a willingness to, to continue on the committee, so. Not sure if you can take them individually or if you want to approve them in two separate groups, the Select Board and TA, and then separately the Town Administrator. And we'll refer to the list that's in the backup, whatever the board's pleasure is on that.
Any thoughts, anybody? What you'd like to do? We'll just do them all at once? Unless, unless somebody wants to hold something.
Again.
They can say hold on anything or tell me what it is.
Unless anybody has objections or want to hold them, I'd make a motion to approve our three boards. Or actually approve all of them unless anybody has any questions.
Okay.
My, my only question, Mr. Chairman, is Paul, can you remind us what the Cultural Council does?
Sure. So every year, the town receives a sum of money from the state. And this committee, it's actually really cool. This committee gets together and groups within the town, make grant applications to access some of the funds. And they're all for fun, cultural and arts-type programs. There's a lot of submittals from school classrooms. And the grants, you know, are typically a hundred or $200. And this committee basically sorts through all those applications and divvies up, divvies up of the funding. And John, can you correct me if I'm, was that about seven or $7,000 a year or so that we get for the cultural?
Yeah, I think it was like $8,800.
About, about $8,800. And it sort of gets divvied up into small, little hundred-dollar, $200 portions to different groups within the town that apply for the funding for cultural and arts-related projects that they would, they would like to work on. So it's actually a group that gets together sort of once a year to sort through all the applications and make the awards. So it's, I've been told it's a very, some work involved in it in terms of putting together the packages with all the grant applications. But from what I've told, it's a very rewarding committee. And I think we can have a lot more people on the committee to assist. And I know that they're looking for more members, so.
Okay. I mean, I have no problem taking everything as one, as one group.
Okay, so I want to make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve all the annual committee appointments. The Audit Committee, Board of Appeals, Scholarship, Board of Registrazione, Beautification, Conservation, Cultural Council, Historical Commission, ISAC, and the 225 Celebration Committee.
Second.
Hold on, Mr. Chairman. Can you guys just do the select board ones because I actually have to do the TA ones. I have to. Okay, that's why I thought originally we should split them up. Yeah, two, just two separate groups. All right, so, Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation. We approve the Audit Committee, Board of Appeals, and Scholarship Committee.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Most abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I would, I would wish to appoint members of the following committees as shown in, in the board's backup. Board of Registrazione, Beautification Committee, Conservation Commission, Cultural Council, Historical Commission, ISAC, Cybersecurity Committee, 225th Celebration Committee. And I think that is it for mine. So I request the board waive their 15-day waiting period on those. So move?
Second. So move to second. All in favor?
Aye.
What was the thing? Five zero zero.
Thank you. And as noted, we have a couple more committees that we want to put a little bit more work on that we'll bring back to the board later on in the summer.
Okay. All righty. Thank you. Let's go to number 142. Grant of location permit, small cell. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board knows, we spent a great deal of time and effort in permitting two small cell sites within the town over the past couple of years. And not exactly sure what's going on in the small cell industry, but we have received notice that this is the second one now that the company that had the permit, AT&amp;T, has asked us that they wish to rescind that approval. So this is the, for the small cell located at 44 Burlington Mall Road, which was the one that was sort of, sort of in front of Leahy, if you recall that discussion. They no longer want this site. And per Town Council, we need to formally vote to rescind that approval. And we will currently have no small cell sites on, on board town property currently. Those we permitted to and they rescinded both of them, so.
Okay. All right, we're going to go with Jimmy because you're the expert on these things after all the
Yeah. All that work and all of a sudden they're just taking them all down. Yeah, I have no idea what's going on either, but I'd gladly rescind this, but I'll let everybody else chime in because it was just a lot of work and it just seems to have gone nowhere. But at least, you know what?
You learned a lot.
Learned a lot. We were the first town in Massachusetts and one of the first country to have a small cell policy. We were in different publications. I reached out, people reached out from California, from the state of Washington. I spoke at different towns in New England, wanting to know, how did you guys do it? Well, we did it, but may not be fault of an odd, but.
Maybe we crashed the industry.
No, we actually thought, we actually thought Jim was going to be traveling all over the country to give seminars on this.
It was, it was a lot of work, but hey, we got it made.
It was, I know. Okay, Nick?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I'm curious as to what's going on too, you know? With, with no backup information whatsoever, my only like thought that kind of popped in my head when I saw this was that they're going, they're going after towns without, without policies. Because I'm sure that's infinitely easier.
I'm not sure if I've heard much of it. So you guys remember the attorney that worked on those, Ed?
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe if, if I get a chance, I can pull his email out and just say, hey, what's going on?
Yeah, I'd be curious to know what their, what their tactic is. Not that they divulge that information.
I mean, I haven't heard much about small cell in the news either, so it's, I don't know why it's just went from a hot topic to a dead topic, but.
We'll see. But again, like, like Jim said, I'm happy to rescind it, you know? So skin off our noses. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mike?
Yeah, maybe there's a new technology coming that they're all gearing up for that we don't know about. Happy to rescind it.
Sure. Sarah?
Have you heard of this happening at the towns where they're rescinding?
I have not, but I have not actually asked anybody either. So like I say, we were under the impression that we were going to be inundated with requests for small cell towers. And we ended up getting two on Mall Road, both AT&amp;T and both have been rescinded now. So, well, they've walked away from it.
Got it.
Okay. On that, I will take a motion.
I would gladly motion to rescind the grant of location permit of 44 Burlington Mall Road for small cell.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Most against? Five zero zero. Okay. 143 approvals, cell tower lease.
Mr. Chairman, we have Sam Hockenberry, Budget and Procurement Analyst here to talk us through the cell tower leases. He handled all the, all the specifics on it.
The floor is yours.
Thanks. So I'm coming before you tonight to ask for permission, effectively to allow Chair Morandi to sign on your behalf the lease agreement that is in the packet for a cell antenna for DISH wireless at 72 Center Street, which is the water tank. So I guess we're removing a small cell and adding a large antenna. But anyway, this contract spent several months going back and forth between their council and our council. We agreed to terms, so Town Council has signed off on the terms in there. The big point is that it's $35,000 for the first year. And then it will go up between zero to two and a half percent annually depending on inflation. So if inflation continues to be greater than two and a half percent, we'll see two and a half percent increases. If inflation's between, if it's less than two and a half percent, then that would be the increase in the rent. And I believe it's a 10-year lease with an option for an additional 10.
What'd you say the price was?
$35,000.
A month?
A year.
A year.
A wish.
Well, there's, there's towers out there that get 35 a month. Not my two towers, but I'm just saying there are. But is this the DISH tower for DISH TV? Or is this just the DISH tower around?
It's a, a DISH wireless antenna. I, the technical specifics, I'm, I'm not entirely sure. They sent all sorts of building schematics, which I forwarded to DPW and to the building inspector. And they were all good with what was being on there. The water department said that the tank can handle the additional antenna, that there's space on there, that the, the wall will be fine and everything else.
Hey, answer my other few questions. Thank you. Let's go.
We won't need any guy wise or second polls.
Quick, huh?
90-degree angle on this.
Mike?
No issue, Mr. Chairman.
Nick?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sam, do we know at all like the, the radius with which this, this antenna will serve people? Like, or is this just, this is an ideal location for DISH and they were like, can we do this?
So I know that DISH also has an antenna at 27 So I know that DISH also has an antenna at 27 Blanchard on the monopole there, but the, as far as I'm aware, Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile are on the water tank, and I think it's, you know, it's the high point in town geographically, so it covers, I think, a fairly substantial portion of the town. I don't know where all of the other towers that they all use and how that might overlap with other parts of Burlington.
Sure.
But I know that when we switched over to FirstNet for the town's cell phone, when the guys were there, we were like, oh, well, the tower's right there, so the service, like, at the human services building is fantastic. So I know that it's just, it's a good location because it's high up and it's on top of that hill, so it gets better reach than other places.
And how do we come to $35,000 a year? What's the?
Monthly rate? They go on a month, oh, sorry.
Yeah. So I think the original price point, it's, so I took, Whitney was spearheading this, and so I've taken over since she's left. And what she had been doing was, I think in like '21, the leases were all up, put out to bid to allow for companies to bid, and generally speaking, if they're offering us money, we're just going to say, great, that sounds good. And a lot more of the haggling is about the indemnification and use access and things like that. But again, it's our terms and we did a separate one last year for T-Mobile who asked if they could have access, and when we reopened the bid, they were the only ones to offer, and then DISH came around, it was past fall, and so we put out another one, and again, they were the only ones to put up for it. So it's sort of as comes in and they get to dictate a little bit about what they're going to give us. But as of right now, for FY '24, all of, between the three services, the town brought in $270,000, so a quarter million for space that otherwise isn't doing anything, it's pretty good.
I'm all set, yeah, thanks, Sam.
Just a quick question, might be for Mr. Dinesio. These rental fees, lease fees, that goes into the general fund? That's all.
Sarah?
No questions.
Mike?
Still no questions.
No more questions. All right. You give us an idea, so we have two other ones up there now? We have two other cell sites up there?
So there's a monopole at 84 Bedford and one at 27 Blanchard, and then it's.
Let's spread out then, not all on that one hour up there.
And the monopoles, Crown Castle is at each of those, but DISH is also at the Blanchard site.
And each site has a different ID number for our town?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, we have several carriers on the water tower at 72.
Okay, we have more than just?
We have three carriers right now on the water tower, so this would be a fourth.
Okay. All right. I could get into a lot of them, but, all right, we're good.
Okay. So the motion from council, I should have put it in the packet, my apologies, is to approve the lease with DISH for the property at 72 Center Street for cell antenna and to authorize the chair to sign any and all documents necessary to effectuate the same.
So move.
Sorry, before, a second. The length of the lease is how long?
10 years, yep.
Okay. Excuse me. Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote against? Vote abstained? 5-0-0 in favor?
Thank you. They're sending their, the signed document with their signature on it. The council said that they needed to sign first, so when I get that, I will contact Mr. Chair and we'll get that sorted out.
You can tell, if there's any guide wires, we're not going to do it.
Yeah, no, 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 I was glad that mine was a water tank and not a pole.
You got lucky this time, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Sam, send me that, please. Thank you.
Okay, subcommittee report, Sarah?
Sure, I have a couple. For historical commission, just wanted to let it be known that on Saturday, July 13th, at 11:00 AM, the Burlington Museum, across from the common, will have an open house where people can go in, tour the space, look around. I think they're trying to do these monthly. They had one in June and it got a few dozen people coming in and out, so pretty successful, so trying to get the word out on that. For DPW, paving, as everybody knows, is going on all around town. Wilmington Road will be in July, Francis Wyman Road in August, and there will be, you know, message boards and reverse nine-on-ones going out about those. And just a reminder that the, I know it's summertime and people are watering their lawns. The MWR connection permit does require us to continue outdoor water restrictions, and so people should come even on schedule before 9:00 AM and after 5:00 PM for watering, so just encourage people to continue with that schedule. And a couple of other things, we are scheduled to add two new EV charging spaces next to the existing ones. And lastly, the solar installation at Mill Pond will be starting in the next few weeks. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a memo to read from Chief Brown from BPD about the new town-wide emergency notification system. The town of Burlington is going to be making a switch to a new emergency notification service. This is the system that is used by town agencies to inform citizens in emergency situations as well as for special events or DPW concerns. Our current system is called Code Red, and it'll be switching to a new system called Rave. Switch will occur on July 1st, but in the meantime, residents may receive calls from the old system telling them about the switch as well as a test call from the new system. Rave is a Massachusetts-based company and will provide the same services and features that were provided by Code Red. We are in the process of moving our existing data to the new system. Residents and business owners will be able to go to a web-based self-service portal to change and update their contacts and preferences. For those who cannot do this online themselves, personnel at the Burlington Police Department will be able to help. Test calls will be coming this week, and more information will be on the town and department websites and social media platforms starting this week to include the contact information for any resident or business owner needing technical help with any changes in their information. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Nick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So ISAC is working really hard to continue their efforts around cybersecurity awareness and efforts the town can make to secure ourselves. Just recently, Burlington was attacked and we're spending $436,000 to mitigate cybersecurity attack that happened there. So it is happening, unfortunately, and the more that we are prepared as a town, both as an organization and, you know, as residents keeping a watchful eye for, you know, all kinds of spam and concerning, you know, digital, you know, emails or what have you, the better off that we're going to be. I also want to thank Officer Glenn Mills for all of his work as a part of the committee, and I know that Kevin Dory is taking over in that capacity for BPD, and I want to welcome him to the committee. I'll skip economic development because Melissa was here at our last meeting, and, you know, there's always a lot happening there. We could spend, you know, an entire meeting to talk about economic development. People Helping People is having their 30 annual open house this Wednesday, the 26th, at their location, 21 Murray Ave, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, where they're also honoring Julie Lewis for the award that she recently received. People Helping People constantly doing wonderful things. I'm very excited to be the liaison, this go-around, and supporting that organization. Lastly, we are just over a week away from the annual 4th of July parade, and this is my shameless plug that, you know, the parade is happening, rain or shine. Road closure starts around 9:30, and the parade kicks off around 11:00. We try to say promptly 11:00, but you never know. So if you're traveling through the area or you know someone who is, let them know the roads are shutting down around 9:30, and they should divert themselves away from Cambridge Street and 62, that intersection, as we begin to plan for the parade. I know that the board will be walking again this year, I always appreciate it when, you know, we get out there and, you know, wave our hands at residents who may or may not know who we are. But, you know, as always, a huge thank you goes out to the committee for all of their tireless effort, a huge thank you to all the sponsors, and a huge thank you to all the participants who come out and make the parade a really great showing every year. So looking forward to seeing everyone out there. Thanks, Chairman.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regards to the fight of the home, May, the month of May, they had 426 calls for service. Of those, 260 were EMS-related, so our EMS staff is constantly busy. They knocked down a building fire on North Ave by accessing the building through a loading dock. They were out on Blanchard Road rescuing ducklings that went down a drain, and I feel honored to be a member of this board, to have, as we saw earlier tonight, to have Burlington's first female firefighter appointed. It's just an unbelievable breakthrough for Burlington, so we should all feel good about that. Regarding the sculpture park, we had a, if you haven't noticed, we have the donated pig sculptures, not donated, but pig sculptures on the town common, very, very colorful, very, very artistic. A lot of them were done by high school art students, some were done by private artists, but every time I've ever been by there, there are people at the sculptures. If you haven't seen them, come down, take a look, they have beautiful works of art. And the question we often get is, why pigs? Well, at one point, Burlington was a site of higories, which we found out is a word, and pigs outnumbered the number of humans living in Burlington three to one at one point in Burlington's history. So hence, that's why we have the pigs. And that's it on my subcommittee.
Thank you. Just a real quick, couple, real quick things. We turned down a Verizon thing a little while ago, not this meeting, but the double poles. So far, they've got 12 down, they're still working on them. They've got three double poles down already, and they're still working on them. So what we did up here, I thought was a great thing, and it's starting to work. They're all over town doing different poles, which are they getting rid of the doubles and triple poles for? Sarah, you mentioned the hot dogs, I can cross that off. The car show we had on the common was People Helping People, roughly it was $10,000, pretty close to $10,000 is what he raised to help People Helping People. And once again, Bernie, he did a great job. The cars were amazing, they shared 280 cars, I think he said he had up there. He was starting to get worried that he didn't have enough room, and when they left the common, it was spotless. It was absolutely spotless. They sold t-shirts, they sold hamburgers and hot dogs, everything was perfect, it was a great day weather-wise, and there was a lot of beautiful cars up there, I don't know who went and didn't go, but there were some really classic, classic cars. So that's all I can say about that. Mr. Sagarino?
Mr. Chairman, all I had was the update on the Northeastern scholarships, so verbal commitment, we've still got a long way to go and a lot of details to work out, but we're really excited. They're really working hard to be a great partner to Burlington, and like I say, I feel really lucky that we have campus of a world renowned institution like Northeastern right here, and Burlington is a great thing for us, so I'm really happy to report that to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Dinesio, anything? How'd you shoot this weekend? Oh, I'll wait till afterwards. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Vote yes, all yes, wow, that's quick. All in favor?
Aye.
Whatever says no. Meeting adjourned.